Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Troy City Council meeting of April 18th, 2011. We are requesting that folks that have signs either go to the back if they want to hold them up. If you're in the seats and you hold them up, you're obstructing view of other people, and that is not allowed. We will begin, I think that you've seen the agenda, we have quite a few items to cover before the public comments section, but your names have been recorded if you signed up for, to speak. We'll begin this evening with Mayor Pro Tem Mary Kerwin giving the invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Tonight is a reading from the Book of Leviticus. You shall not bear hatred for your brother or sister in your heart. Though you may have to reprove your fellow citizen, do not incur sin because of him. Take no revenge and cherish no grudge against any of your people. You shall love your neighbor as yourself.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with all my devotion, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. We have the roll call, Mr. Fratello.
Mayor Sh...
Folks, we'd like your attention through the entire meeting. Thank you.
Mayor Shelling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howarlac?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
For our present. We begin this evening with presentations, and the first one is a community survey result presentation from Ed Sarpolos with Target Insight. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members and staff. I'm sure we can get it up on the big screen, or we're going to look at the side.
It'll go on both sides, and then it'll go here.
My name is Ed Sarpolos, and welcome back myself to Troy. I've had an opportunity to work for the city of Troy now well over the last decade, working on library millages and school millages and bonds and community surveys, so to me, it's just sort of coming back home to the community. As you probably aware of the fact, your council commissioned a community survey, and it was commissioned a survey of 400 registered voters in the community of Troy, and it was stratified across all the precincts of the city. So every precinct was proportionately represented based on registered voters. And the reason we chose resident voters, because any decisions the council would make, if it's put before the ballot, it's the voters that make the decision, so it's a representative sample of voters of the city of Troy. It was conducted by my company, Target Insight. I've been in this business now well over almost 40 years, doing surveys for corporations, businesses, and community surveys. The survey was conducted between March 29th and April 3rd of this year, and for those who are into statistics, the margin of error is plus or minus 4.9%. That means one out of 20 times that a survey is conducted, the numbers won't very much plus or minus five percentage points, depending on the numbers. Okay, so that's basically the statistics behind it. The purpose of the survey...
We're going to have the microphone turned up. Is that, is all the way up?
The purpose of the, there we go, that's much better. The purpose of the survey was to ascertain acceptable levels of service in each of the core services, and what specific services citizens are willing or not willing to pay for, and also based on this community survey to create some kind of report card of city services. That was the primary task, the two main point tasks of the survey. For those who took the survey, you were on the phone as much as 20 minutes. We had nearly some 70 questions, so this was a very thorough survey, and I have to thank the people of Troy who took the time to take the survey, and both men and women, and young and old. So it was representative of everybody who represented the survey area. Okay, one of the key questions that we always ask is, what is the direction of the city? And this gets the mood of the city, what's going out there. Presently, the mood of the city, the voters of the cities is that the city is moving in the wrong direction by 68%. Now, that's the mood that's not only seen by your city, but other communities, not only here in the state of Michigan, across the country. There are budget woes, some of this is impacted by what you're reading in the newspapers or on radio and TV. There's a general anti-government mood, or at sort of an economy mood, so that's generally the mood of where the public is at, and it could be very reasons why that happens. As part of that, we asked them, what is their, I'm sure I got the right there, okay? We asked them, what is their number one, what are their issues that they think are important to them, what are they thinking about? What are the voters thinking about? And what's very interesting is, is the top issue amongst voters is what many of the people are in this audience here tonight. Their biggest concern in the city amongst voters was the closing of the Troy Library. Number two is eliminating the city budget deficit. And the Troy Library is very important throughout the whole survey, the library comes up as responses, both in open-ended questions and responses, what they're willing or not willing to pay for. I have to tell you, from working in other communities, the fact is, your library was the anchor for your city. You don't have a traditional city, you don't have a traditional downtown, you don't have traditional neighborhoods, you don't have a traditional, like a sports team, or something like that. So you're identified by your library. So the loss... I was not paid to say that, by the way.
Just a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, in order to speed things up, for you to have time to speak, we'd ask you to hold your applause. If there's something that you particularly enjoyed that someone's saying, we can see all your faces, you can give us a big smile, and that way it'll move along faster.
Okay.
Mr. Sarpolos?
Thank you. Number two in this was eliminating the city budget deficit and balancing it, providing city quality services with the declining tax revenues, keeping city taxes and fees low, protecting the public from crime and drugs, providing economic development and jobs, maintaining and improving the city's streets, city parks, recreation apartments. But the bottom line is, is that the budget's on people's mind, especially voters, because that's what they're hearing about, not only in your community, but across the state. You're being impacted by cuts in Lansing, where I live, so I know exactly what's going on a day-to-day basis, but in your particular case, what's hitting home is the library. Okay? Number two, what is the overall job rating that the city in providing these services? Now, this is in contrast, remember, the question, the first question, is the direction of the city is on the wrong track? This is contradicted by how they rate the job of the city providing services. So the positive job rating of services adds 66%. So despite the negative mood about the government in general, the city's direction, they do believe that based on, despite the budget cuts that's going on, that they feel that their services are being delivered. Okay? Negative rating is 33%. Now, in cities that are not in financial struggle, the positive rating can be around 70 to 80%. In marketing business, a C, 70%, is around a C, 80% is a B, A, for those who've been schoolteachers, the point being the fact you're doing well by two to one, but usually, a long-term goal is the fact is to get your positive rating over 70%. Okay, just some background on that for you. The rating of the city council, this is somewhat negative, a negative job rating of 70%. And this is basically is what they read in the newspaper, what they hear from their friends, there's any tension in battle debates, that revs off on voters, what they're picking up, okay? And I did a little bit of Google searches, there are some heated moments sometimes at city council and things going on, the voters hear that and pick that up. Okay, and then also the fact is, is how you're dealing with the deficit, and I'm sure some of that feedback of the negative ratings, what's happening with the library, so some of that blame on the library closing may be at your footsteps, so this is reflected in the job rating here. Okay, now, we asked them a number of different questions. The core purpose of this survey was to rank order the priorities of core and essential services. And so we asked a series of 25 questions relating to core essential services. We explained to them, there have been budget cuts, with more budget coming from, and the city council is going to have to make some decisions based on those priorities. And so we asked them to go through each one of these, ask them, do they think that this particular core service should be eliminated, should there be more cuts but not eliminated, should more revenue keep the same, so that's what we're doing. The first one we asked about was snow plowing services, which has gone from one days to three days and up. Next one is fixing potholes, maintaining and resurfacing city streets, garbage recycling, fire protection services, providing senior citizens programs and services, building inspection permit, operation maintenance of two golf courses, planning department services, economic and business development activity, police protection with police officers on the job, museum and historic village, police protection services, city recreation sports program, the aquatic center, snow plowing on city streets, tree maintenance, operation community center, special events like festivals and activities, snow plowing of county roads. You want, some cities don't have county roads, in your case, you have county roads that you have to plow, so that's listed in your list, which may not typical. Assistance for community groups, operation and maintenance of the nature center, engineering department and management of city street design, the public library, code compliance and controlling blight, trash, operation and maintenance of city parks. Now, here's the rank order. If you asked me, what is the most important core essential service that people either want to see the budget the same or increase, number one is fire protection by 88%. That's their number one core essential service that people focus on in the survey. 80% said they either want to keep it, or see increased funding. Number two is fixing potholes at 86, snow plowing, ice removal of city streets was at E5, subdivision was at 82, garbage collection, police protection, snow plowing, public library at 72. That's tier one, okay? Tier two is code compliance of blight and trash and junk, police protection services, specifically support, staff, economic operations, you can go down the whole list, but the top one, the top list up there is fire protection, fixing potholes, snow plowing, garbage recycling, police protection on the streets, snow plowing, and the public library. That's your, that's your tier one list of essential and core services that you're asking, or the people want to see the services maintained, or either revenues increased or added on. Okay? And that's the list of the 25. Now, some cities, we have as much as 40 essential services, you're a little bit different, but your core are 25. Now, we asked them, okay, now, out of this, keep the same, what is the point that actually want to see additional revenue? The number one was the public library at 41%. Number two is fixing potholes, maintaining and resurfacing, snow plowing, ice removal of city streets was at 31, economic business development at 18. Your tier one is those at 30 or above, those are the core ones where they want to see increased revenue being spent money on. Okay, those are very key. Now, I want to comment here, if you look at the first page, on this page here, now, this community here is a little bit different than traditional cities, because you don't have a traditional older downtown center, you don't have a traditional neighborhood, you don't have a ball team, you don't have a traditional neighborhood function or festivals. Most of these services are related to the me generation versus the community generation. Okay? You don't have a truly community-wide sense of a community. Okay? If you look to your neighbors to the south, like Oak Park, they've increased their millages, other cities don't. You go to Ann Arbor, the question is, is what is the city's vision, its members' vision? And most communities, sometimes I see the priorities of most cities is family, schools, church, and community life, quality of life. The focus of your community right now is not focused on quality of life issues. It's not what's needed by the city, it's what needed for them. Okay, as you move forward as a community, as a council, your difficulty is going to be, is how do you get the community to think of Troy, how do they think about the whole city, not just themselves? Because in order for a city to survive, as you know the fact, you have to have a vibrant involvement in the city. I live in Lansing, we fight very hard to keep our city festivals, our completely art programs, our swimming pools, our baseball team, because that's keeps, it's what you do in the city. I guess being, from being an outsider coming in, most of your residents sleep here and reside here, but they don't live here. What do I mean by that? They don't stay in Troy to do things. They got a good school, they've got a good home, and they sleep here. It's not where they necessarily hang out. Okay, you can tell that by the focus of activities is low on the list. Okay? And I point that out, because in fact, as you go forward as a council, how are you going to create that community pro-Detroit, a pro-Troy attitude? You got to get committed, what do they want to do here in the city, other than just live? Okay? I had to point that out, because the fact is, I go through these numbers, you're going to see the same thing, it's all about me and the snow, whatever, but not about the city as a whole. Okay, though obviously we have, we know what they wanted to spend money on and maintain, what is their top cut? The top cut is the two golf courses at 79%, which I think you've already eliminated, but that's still on their list perceived as the city is paying for those things as a function. Number two is special events and festivals and other activities in other communities, that wouldn't be that high, it'd be much lower on the list. Okay? Operation Aquatic Center, Museum and Historic Village, citizens' community groups, tree maintenance, so that's your rank order where people have the low priority in that type. If you notice, none of these things here, that, none of the things that they want to cut are what families would be wanting to partake in, would attract young people here. Okay? If you look at the demographics, the support from the library is because of fact that's a families with kids, or the young people that are moving into your community, it's part of the attraction. So you have to get, I just want to let you point these issues out, the fact is that your voters, your traditional voters, are not focused on the family or community, they're focused on their immediate residents. What do they strongly want to eliminate? Just eliminate themselves outright. The two golf courses at 33%, special events at 25, Family Aquatic Center at 23, citizens' community groups 17, Museum Historic Village is 15, and then again, at the bottom, the snow plowing, that's the lease mile removal, but there again, outside of the golf courses, the things that people would want to do in the city, activities in cities they're willing to cut. I live in Lansing, that would not be the case. Okay, because we want to keep, it's a vibrant type of community. Okay? When I, when I keep coming here, and my daughters live in the neighborhood, it affects us, is that you don't have a traditional downtown. Where do people hang out? You don't have a neighborhood bar, a neighborhood restaurant, a neighborhood hangout. You have, you come here to go shopping, but what other activities? What are you known for? Right now, it's the libraries as your anchors, is that type of thing. I know I'm repeating that, independent of your group here, but think about that, what does you market the city of Troy as? When you want to live here, yes, taxes are low, but that's not why you live in a community. Because if you wouldn't want to live in New York, if there was a reason you were looking for low taxes, you'd go there because of activities and recreation, that's what makes a city vibrant in the long run. So that's some of the things that you're going to have to compete as you go forward. What is, what is Troy going to be known for? Why do you live here? What do you want to do here, with your family and your friends? Okay, what do they want to keep the same? No changes and increases. Fire protection, garbage recycling, police protection, the same thing as those we said keep and keep the same, those things are dealing amongst themselves, except for the library, which is, which is up there on the high list. What to cut but not eliminate, tree maintenance and trimming service at 49%, operation maintenance of golf courses, recreational support programs, special events, festivals, and other activities, museum and historic village, planning department, operation and maintenance of nature center, all the things that families would focus on is the things that they're looking at the, at the top, as cuts. Now, we actually focused on in the survey, those things that you've already cut, to see the sense, is there any pain being felt by your community? Okay, there's a number of lists of cuts that you've already cut. What do we ask them about? The 23 big cut stuff in the fire department and career staff, the training of firefighters, you know, coordinated public education of fire prevention inspection program, recreation programs, pay for themselves for fees. Now, there's, there's a fee-based program versus basically provided free by the city. Maintenance of the streets and the drains means work will be eliminated, limited pothole patching and emergency repairs. Plowing the snow and salt on county roads will be eliminated. We asked about that, we asked about the reduction of the police staff, we talked about the ability of responsibility about police responses to calls, whether or not they're going to respond to every call, that's going to be reduced to specific events, police will not, in some cases, will not be returning phone calls or showing up. Theft reports, no longer be able to provide school patrol officers to assign to high schools, we asked about that, in some communities, that's, the police are very important in patrolling the schools. And Troy police will no longer be able to provide same level of investigating individuals who are sex offenders on registry. Traffic safety will be eliminated, police will soon be reduced the level of investigation of computer-generated crimes and perpetrators and pedophiles, youth and safety programs such internet safety for kids, seniors scams, drug alcohol will be eliminated. Okay, what's the one that they want to either reinstate the dollars or increase the dollars, because they've sent some pain? Bottom line, it goes back to them again, no longer be able to plow the snow on county roads. That's their number one issue. That almost seems like every question, it's snow. Okay? Or snow plowing, or garbage, or trash. That's where their focus is, it's about them and their residents. Okay? Number two, they want to maintain or increase, Troy police will no longer be able to respond to theft reports. Number three, maintenance of the streets and drains means limited to, you can go back to the original question, the reduction of police staff, no longer respond to property damage, same level of sex offender registry, but you can see the top list, the top 40, is basically related back to their personal residence, not the city. What do they want to see increased dollars? This is actually relatively low numbers, increased spending, but already has been cut, but the number one issue is no longer able to plow snow on county roads located within the city. It's a problem for them, but they're not willing to commit that much money, and none of the issues, no more wants an increase than 17%. That's not even a plurality on those type of things. What do they want to reinstate funding for? Snow plowing. Okay? Think like I'm in Chicago with Mayor Daley, that he only focuses on is having enough snow trucks. Okay? No longer be able to respond to theft reports, so it's fire, police, those fees, you can see the rank order of things, those things that gets them to drive on the roads, the roads is their most key, key factor, getting to work, getting from work, leaving town, coming back to town. Okay, maintain cuts, this is breaking out the maintaining and cuts, the funding cuts, coordinated training of firefighters and public education programs, you can read through the list. What to cut more, recreation programs must either pay for themselves, or fees, or for participation, or they're cut, that's where they want to see, the top list at 16, 23% in career staff, see a little bit more cut there, youth and other programs, cut, police department no longer be able to provide school patrol officers, cut some more, those are the rank orders. Now, we asked them about if they were going to be, the council put up a millage vote. Okay, last February, you put up a millage vote of 1.9%. We re-asked that question, if the vote were held today, 43% would vote yes, 9% are leaning towards yes, but the solid vote, those you could depend upon are at 43%, the solid no is at 40, lean no is 2, and undecided is 6%. Just for your best experience, the fact, the undecided vote, if they're not educated, either don't vote, or they tend to vote no, because to no for them means status quo. Doesn't mean necessarily there are no voters, it's the fact that to their mind, if I don't understand something, I tend to vote no. But right now, your vote, right now, solid vote is at 43%. We asked 1.5 mills. The yes vote, solid yes vote goes from 43 to 46%, it ups itself. The lean vote increases to 10%, no vote drops to 37, with lean no at 2. We asked 1 mil, it jumps up to 47%, now you're getting close to the 50% mark of those who are committed to devoting yes. Why is also, this also important is the fact that lean yes voters tend to, people don't always vote, show up at the polls, okay, those people are committed, who are willing to say something, are most likely to vote. So now you're at a solid yes at 47, lean yes at 15, solid no at 33, no lean no, and undecided at 5%. We asked a half mil, the solid yes vote now comes at 49% with lean yes at 19%. Okay? And I think one of the most important things that gets back to your, as a council member, I know you've been trying this, is the community outreach. Only 13% of the people that we polled at voters get their information about the city council, what's going on, from watching you on television. Okay? That's good, yes, and it could be bad, whatever, depends on your educational component. As a city government, you don't have money to spend on advertising, do radio programs, so like that, so your task is much harder if only 13% are already focusing on cable television. I can tell you, in some cities, it's high as 27 and 30%. So you're about half of what it is in some other communities that I'm polling in. So, as I mentioned, the disconnect between your voters and the city is exemplified, the fact how if you actually watch your, your cable program to watch your show, that's the reason why the difficulty of getting your message out when you do something like that. Any questions? I know I rushed through this, but there's a lot here.
Councilmembers, do you have questions for Mr. Sarpolos at this time? I think that, that there's a lot of data here that gives us information about the kinds of services that they appreciate. I think that the thing that you stressed a lot is the fact that folks are focused on themselves.
Yes.
I, I think that that is a general societal situation that we're in right now, and it indicates the fact that they are, in my view at least, that they are needing information about why the total community and the total picture of things that we do with our budget, et cetera, is important, the educational piece is important.
And also the fact is, you have to look at the fact that your city is itself is low on crime.
Right.
Low in taxes. Okay? You don't have your own main newspaper that everybody reads. Okay? And so the point being the fact, things are going relatively well in Troy. And so the point, they don't know all the things that are going on underneath. You've stretched your budget, you've hid a lot of the problems that are going on in the city, except for the library, and so that's reflected in the poll numbers, and yes, it's going to be hard for you to expose what else is out there. When I've worked with others, like school districts next door, Bloomfield Hills, you know, when we, we looked at a mill, we had to educate the voters, the fact that there are, do have holes in their schools, they do have leaky holes, the things are busted, but the voter says, well, the schools are so great. Well, unless you educate the people about what your needs are, they assume everything is okay.
Madam Mayor? Councilmembers, yes, Councilwoman Beltramani?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the information. I'm, I'm kind of trying to internalize the disconnect between funding the fire department and cutting the back, all, you know, together. And one of the pieces of information, I wondered if it was in your data that you presented to the folks, or if you got the feeling that they knew that this was a primarily volunteer fire department?
I think there's a mixed understanding that it's volunteer. Remember, you have a very large city here.
Absolutely.
You know, when I grew up in a smaller rural community where it was a volunteer, you knew they were volunteer, because they were your neighbor, that type of thing.
The other, thank you. The other question is, with 13% getting their information from our show, as you call it, is there any information on where other sources?
Yes, if you go to the second section of your, your packet there, we have the actual survey itself, and if you go back to the back of the, the back of the survey, you'll find on, I think it's page 11 or 10. Actually, it is page nine. And question 59, Troy Times, 36% say they get most of the information from the Troy Times, the council at 13, the website at 13, comments from friends, word of mouth at 12, television coverage of the city, 9%, thank you to the television stations here that contribute to 9% of the knowledge in the city. The Oakland, Oakland Press at 6%, Detroit Free Press 3, Troy Today at 3, other newspapers 2, Detroit News 1, radio coverage 1. What's surprising to me is how low the radio coverage is. Because many, you know, you're, obviously you're not a talk radio type community then, where you're listening to the chatter in the community then.
Thank you.
Other questions from council, from Mr. Sarpolos?
Just to remind you, yes, the second packet is the actual completed survey, that we actually spent interviewing... we actually spent interviewing the people on the phone, so you have the actual questionnaire itself.
Thank you.
I think this information will be helpful to us as we go forward with our budget considerations, looking at the data. You indicated that you surveyed 400 people, but that can be extrapolated out
Yes.
To a larger number.
Stratified, random scientific survey, yes.
Okay, because you covered all precincts
Yes.
And all categories.
Yes.
And so all of your data then is, and you indicated the plus and minus.
What I mean by the fact is that 68% said the city was on the wrong track, that that could be 63, or it could be 73.
Right. But my question is, how does your survey relate as far as, compare to other surveys on the plus and minus factor as far as accuracy?
This is the accuracy, 85% of the time when we go to a millage or a bond, working in the community, 85% of the polls, exactly what's going to happen at the polls.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mayor Paton Curran?
Mm-hmm. That's why I was stressing the importance of looking at the actual hard number of yes versus the soft, and that combined.
Mr. Sarpos, you did refer to the library as an anchor of the community, really the heart of the community. A lot goes on in our library.
Well, you got to remember
Let me, let me
Go ahead.
That's just a start.
Yes.
Yet, when you talk about, yet, the survey results, when it talks about increasing money or eliminating things, the rank tends to come up again for public safety, over and over and over again.
True, but the library's in the top tier.
Right.
Okay, what bring, when you look at the demographics, what do everybody seem to respond to? What is consistent on increased spending? What's crease at the top of the order? What's low on the list of cuts? Where's the pain? When they list, remember, the question up the front, question number four, we did not read them a list, okay, on some of these things. Those were open-ended questions. This is what they responded themselves. So this is something that's on the top of their mind. So I was looking at the survey, what is, what do people talk about? What are they feeling about? What makes them identify themselves as from Troy? What attracts people? When I look at the people who are here this, a short time here, what's one of the things that they list, high on their list? It's the library.
There's no doubt that it is the center, center of the community.
Yes.
The question, the follow-up question is, you know, what are people willing to pay for as well? Sustainability of that.
Well, that was the top thing at 41%. And if you look that up there, I think you look at the last November vote. I think there was some confusion at the ballot, there was some misinformation going on on both sides that came close.
We have that in Troy.
Yes.
A sense of confusion on many of our things.
Yes.
You may not have realized on the snow removal, that for this community, there has been a drastic change.
There has, yes.
From the 24-hour
To the three-day, yes.
To a three-day. So that I'm not surprised that people noticed, wow, what's happened here, nor the desire to see that improved.
That's true, but remember, one of those things were asked individually. We didn't ask them as an aggregate. So even though they ranked, when the snow is very high, the question is that they didn't rank other things very high. So that's what I was looking for. This is, is this a community-centered community right now, or more focused on their own personal residence and themselves right now? Because I work in other communities where it's much more internalizing, as they work with the public, there's a focus not only on their own personal needs, but as a community needs.
May I ask one more question?
Yes. Mayor Paton Curran?
You started out by speaking something that you've seen regionally, nationally, perhaps, and that is the role of government.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if some of this doesn't fit in with that trying to work with the role of government piece. We used to believe that government was about the public good, the public wheel.
Well, it's still there. It's still there. The question is, is that, Ryan, you're dealing with budgets, you're dealing with cuts. Okay, you're not doing a lot of ribbon-cutting, you're not doing a lot of gland-handing, you're not out there, you're not, you're not, you're not coaching a baseball team. You know, a lot of you have other jobs, you have other businesses. You know, if you remember when you were growing up, the mayor and the city council seemed to be everywhere. They were part of everything. That is not tradition as it used to be. That's why, that's why I think, I heard that you're doing more community outreach. I think that's very key. And that's, you know, I mean, we didn't do a name recognition on your survey, we didn't know how many recognized names, which I do in many other city committee surveys. But the point being is a large number of people wouldn't know who you are, or list your names. And I think is that, remember, is that you are the representative of the city. If they don't see you and know you, they don't know what else the city's all about. And with strapped budgets, your communication partner can't communicate some of the things. Or, for example, your police office don't have funds to say, "What are our kids going to do in the summertime if there aren't activities? How does that impact crime?" You know, I don't have those funds to talk about those things. Okay? And that's a difficult thing when budgets are tight. But I'm just trying to say, there's the outreach, whatever you can, is important that you continue to do that.
Others? Councilman Slater?
We did get rid of our community festival. Would it be a recommendation to look at that again? Is that the type of thing that you're talking about, getting the community back involved?
Well, it might be different in your community. For example, in Lansing and East Lansing, we did a lot of what's called conjoint analysis. We actually had community input. What would they want to see, to bring them involved in the arts and the festival, that type of thing? We have the summer festival, that's, we have all the bands and groups, and it's, every year it's grown in numbers and support. But that was done through research. That was not, you know, that wasn't just said, "Let's do a festival." That's what the community said they wanted. Considered young, because it's a campus, it made sense. East Lansing doesn't do the band fest, they actually do more arts type thing. You got Brighton and Holland Pickney, what do they do? They do the chocolate thing. I mean, you have to find out what works in your community. It's going to be different. Okay? If I was in, if I was in a war in Utica, it might be a NASCAR event. Okay? Because if you go to their homes, a lot of people, you know, it depends on your community. So to say, yes, it's important to have something, yes, that your city identifies. What that is, I can't say that today.
I, oh, yeah, I did notice, Councilman Slater, on the cutting, it was the fourth item down. Special events, festivals, and other activities, 44% said cut the dollars to that.
Yes. And that's why I mentioned the fact is, is that, remember, I said, the people basically reside and basically sleep here. That means they're not trying to stay in the city to do activities, which is very key. And I know, the city manager, we talked about from his background. People have to have things to do in the city to support the city. So what do they do in the city? Okay? What activities that make, attach themselves to the city? Okay, I grew up in Detroit, I still go back to Detroit, because I grew up doing things in the city. Okay? What do people do in the city? What is it, you know, yes, my ex-wife, my kids, it's shopping, okay? But what else do you do when you're not shopping?
Councilman Slater, did you have another question?
Yeah. There's been people that have told me that this was a push-pull survey.
That's why I love those great positive numbers of 68% wrong track and whatever. I mean, that's, I pushed them to say no.
Yeah. Could you just, could you just talk about that a little bit?
Well, the bottom line is, is that typically, people assume what the response of the poll is going to be, it's going to go against what they view the world should be. So you always shoot the messenger. I've been in this business now since 1972. This is my livelihood. And Channel 7's been a client, Fox News, Detroit Free Press and News. My reputation is based on not doing push polls. My job is getting correct, accurate information.
You're very, very confident that you did that with this survey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, when I, your staff had input, the fact is, if I felt the question was being in the wrong direction, I said we weren't going to word the question that way. These are traditional surveys that I had done or have done in the past all over the state.
Thank you.
Councilman Fleming?
You got 400 people to respond. How many did you have to contact? Were the people that refused to take the survey, or got partway through the survey?
Probably about twice, at about 1,000 to 1,200 people. Some were busy and at home, couldn't take it. Or, in some case, the fact is, is that we had a balance of men and women, young and old. So some people, we had to tell them no, because the fact, we would have had too many men, too many women, too many young people, too many old people.
Anybody else?
Mayor?
Council? Councilman Howard?
One thing that you mentioned was personal needs versus community needs.
Yes.
And I'm curious as to whether you are making the connection between the government's, the government's role as in the city's role, and what other organizations external to the government can provide, because clearly, there's a differentiation between what people believe the government should do. Do you believe that, that people in general are opposed to the community needs?
The difficulty, the fact, in most communities, voters don't separate what is traditionally governmental, which is non-traditional. For example, when I do a lot of school polls for millages and bonds, most communities believe that the city government is responsible for their schools. They don't separate them. So a lot of times, when I'm involved with school districts, I involve the city mayor, the city council, that type of thing. The public doesn't necessarily separate those, that may be in your case, but they turn to, what is the city doing? Okay?
Well, I'm looking at your interpretation of some things, and one, one related to two golf courses. Maybe it's because folks think one is fine, and two is too many for a city of 80,000 people, when you can go basically 10 miles to any public golf course in the area.
I'm not arguing whether golf, I'm just saying the fact is, almost none of the items that would relate to activities within the city.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Whether it's for parks, schools, festivals, whatever, had any very high support outside the library. It's not an issue that I'm saying, the golf course is something you should keep. I'm just looking for a trend or a pattern. Okay? I couldn't find anything that would relate to a community thing that somebody would want to do in the city, or an activity to stay in the city, either a family, as a group, that had a lot of strong support. Not that I say that's what you should keep or not. When he, when Councilman Slater asked me the question, "What should you do?", I says, "I don't really know that, because your community might be different." I'm looking at, what is the mood of the public? What is their tendency? It may not be a golf course, I'm just saying, that's an example of all the items, of activities that people will want to do, or in their, in their free time, or with their family, ranked low in the survey.
Now, would it be possible that things that are rating very high as points of concern for residents would be areas where there's been a lot of pain felt? Say, for example, the last year with snow removal on, on major roads and streets, and neighborhood streets, and of course, the library issue with it, kind of coming down to the wire here. Those seem to be recurring themes.
That's the reason why we asked each one of those things individually. We didn't actually ask them as a group, so they could respond to them individually.
Right.
And sell their communities, the ones that they're more community-oriented, would still would have ranked higher. Okay? Not to say that we rank as high as snow, I never said that. Okay? I was just saying the fact is that, that's why we asked each of those things individually, separate from the other ones. So they could respond directly to the aquatic centers, directly to the festivals, directly to community support groups.
And from an interpretation standpoint, where you, had, did you go back after this was said and done, and look at some of the other surveys that we've done in the past to see kind of where things are trending and?
I had not looked at your city surveys, because I didn't have access to those, but I've worked in other communities, like Fernley and Oak Park, and, because well, part of what I was asked, the fact is ascertain what people are willing to pay for, or pay in the future. Well, part of what people are willing to pay for has nothing to do whether taxes are high or low, has nothing to do whether they can afford it or not. They pay taxes because of value added. Okay? And Kent County in West Michigan back in 2004, typically, what an anti-tax part of the state. We passed three millages within 120 days of about $100 each. People said, "How did you do that?" Because people saw the value added, the need for those, the benefit of those. Or if you lived in Livingston County back in the late '90s, when they were upgrading their school millages every year, because of the value added, the need and necessity. And I'm looking at, as a city government, how do you keep a city survival and vibrant, there's things to do and activity? So there has to be things that people want to support within your city. Right now, those things that would make a city vibrant, people come known for, bring them together, are low on the list. What you change those to is, Councilman Slater asked, I don't know that right now. But as you look forward, yes, the priorities of snow and the police and fire, those are definitely have to be important. But I was looking for other things outside of just those core things. What is your going to be a struggle as you go forward? Because eventually, you only can cut so much. Okay? And if you, eventually, if you don't raise any funds, you don't have enough revenue, then there may no police, may not be any fire. And I'm trying to think is, what would bring people to want to support things? Well, what helps to support things, the fact is the loyalty to the city. "I love my city, I want to do things here, my family does things here." Because I work in other communities. It's what they believe in the city. I remember in Lansing, where we raised money, raised our taxes to have a baseball diamond. People said they weren't going to pay that, because I was raising taxes. But the public wants to do things in their city. They don't want to leave their city to do activities. That's what I'm looking for. Not to say that it's golf courses, I'm just saying, I'm looking for things that typically would mean activities that would be good for family and friends or kids to do, ranked low on the list. Does that help you out, Councilman?
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, since we're still talking, since we haven't had as a city council, other than, you know, your presentation to review this, would you be willing to meet with us again?
Yes.
Or could we submit follow-up questions to you?
Glad to do a conference call or meet you in person. That's, I've always done that, that's been the history, and Councilman Curran knows that from, from previous projects I've worked with her and other teams she's been on. Yes, I'd be more than, no problem to do that, because this is your survey, this is your community, and I want the community to be successful. And I'm a Michigan resident, I grew up in this part of the state, I want Troy to survive. And so the data's here, this is your voter's voice, and you need to know how you can use it to your best advantage.
Councilwoman McGinnis had a question for you, I think. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I had a question regarding asking the participants where they got most of their information.
Yes.
And you pointed out the fact that only about 13% receive, receive it from watching our council meetings, which is obviously where we do a majority of our business, and obviously have all of our discussions.
Yes.
And you did point out another difference in terms of our radio coverage seeming to be low compared to other surveys.
And that's possible because, in fact, you would have probably your own local talk radio show in the city, AM station. I know some of the communities have their own local talk call-in show. Do you have that in the city? Is, no, so I mean, that's probably why it's low. I'm just saying that, you know, some of the communities, they have a local radio show.
Well, my other question to you regarding this would be, I mean, some of these other things that are listed, Troy Times, which is like a local paper for us that is delivered to everyone, so it has a high readership, and I think they get a lot of information out to the public. out to the public. But what are some things that maybe you don't see on this list that you see in some other communities that we might be missing?
Well, I think it's more, this is an open-ended question. We didn't actually read this list to them. Okay? So what I'm looking at, the fact is, is in some communities, the council TV is as high as 27, 35%. Means there's a lot of activity, what's going on. As a matter of fact, where I live in Lansing, people actually get dressed up to be on TV. There's actually movie stars now on local cable television for the council. They went from rags to seem like riches because they want to be on TV all the time. Okay? There is not a lot of focus watching that. So what I'm suggesting, the fact is, nothing that you're doing wrong here is the fact that the public is not focused on what's happening in the city of Troy. They're involved in their own, with their jobs, their lives, or whatever. All I'm suggesting for us is the city council, as you begin to try to educate or get the public, how are you going to do that outreach? That's the task at hand, because as your pain grows and budget grows, you're going to need the help of all of Troy's residents. And the point being, if they're not watching your cable show, they're getting very little information from what they can do, your website, then the question is, how do you do that community outreach? You're going to need help of the community to do that. That's why I say, well, who is your pro-Troy team? What are your pro-Troy residents who believe in the city, want to support the city, be sure that city stays vibrant? Okay? Because you've done well on taxes, your taxes are low, but that's not the reason why you live in the city. Okay?
Thank you. We appreciate it. We'll let you know about the follow-up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the 2011 City of Troy Assessment Role and Board of Review Report, and our city assessor, Nina Lucari, will present with some interesting information in the packet, Mr. Lucari, that is interesting that it's so accurate from, when was it? A year ago?
A year ago, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me here. I'll try to make this very short. Excuse me, I know you're very busy tonight. We generally don't present this as a presentation, it's usually just a report and communication. I wanted to point out a couple of very important issues to you, though. We had another assessed value decrease this year, $448 million. That's about 9%. This is the fifth year, straight year in a row, pardon me for whistling, fifth year in a row that the assessment role has dropped. The only other time that happened was 1976, when inventory was exempted from personal property. That's the first time we ever had a reduction in our role, and now, for five straight years, we've had a reduction in our role. The taxable value, which is what you do collect your revenue from, has decreased 390, almost $395 million, 8.2%. Another hit to the general fund is, is what that means to you. This report that I've given you, the first six or seven pages are written-out explanations. There's a summary after it that might make it easier for you to, to follow. Consumer Price Index this year was 1.7%. That was kind of a surprise to us. As you recall, last year, the Consumer Price Index was less than 1. So all taxable values in the city went down last year. 1.7% was a little higher than we were anticipating in that. That creates the difference between the 9.5% to 10% decrease that I thought we were going to have and the 8.2% that we actually ended up with. There was a pickup of some taxable value. You'll notice, though, that we've almost peaked on that. The taxable value compared to the assessed value is just about at 49%. Since we're working with 50% ratios, there's only about 2% of a difference left there that you could expect to see, and we don't know what that CPI is going to be next year. Personal property role also fell this year, about $24 million, just under 6%. This has been going on for the longest time, and we've been telling you about this for about 13 years, so 11 of those last 13 years, the personal property role has decreased. This all comes off of your revenue stream. As you can see, the personal property role has fluctuated quite a bit, but it has gone down. The industrial facilities role is actually up. As you recall, last fall, we had quite a bit of activity granting tax abatements. It will actually increase again this July. We're still waiting for the State Tax Commission to approve about four of those that you granted. They don't have their approval yet. When that does happen, they'll go on to the industrial facilities role, and they'll come off of the assessment role. So there'll be a decrease again in the assessment role, which will probably happen at the July Board of Review. The one that probably should scare you the most is the Downtown Development Authority role. It's down to about $500 million. It's a 12.2% decrease from last year. The captured amount of the DDA is about $71 million. That's a 49% decrease. We have huge amounts of Michigan tax appeals, tribunal appeals going on in this area. The $71 million that you have there, I can tell you right now, that was at the close of the Board of Review. I have three pending cases before the tribunal that are settled, and there are another $10 million decrease there. If you look at the history here, and I've highlighted the current year, 2011, the capture's at $71 million. The capture hasn't been that low since somewhere between 1995 and 1996, two years after the DDA started. I mean, it's a tremendous drop in revenue for them, and they're going to be in quite a bit of trouble in the next couple of years trying to pay off their debt load. The brownfield, we only have the one bank, the TCF Bank on Coolidge Road. It's also down about 22%. That's on the captured amount, I should point that out. And that's where the revenue stream comes to pay them back for the expenditures they had to clean up that property. The Smart Zone took another big hit. The big development at the southwest corner of Big Beaver and John R. is just not coming to fruition. At this point in time, there won't be any senior housing there. The retail development is on hold. The land value has dropped probably in half. If you remember, the Kmart site, which at one point sold for $43 million and then sold for $17 million, that's the same situation we have here. The, so the Smart Zone took a 46% decrease in captured value. That's, that's just enormous for them. It's just enormous for them. Luckily, they don't have a lot of debt that they have to worry about. So the bottom line here are the numbers that keep coming up every time anything is mentioned about what the average person pays. There's about 27,000 houses in Troy. They have an average residential assessed value of $98,900, and their average taxable value this year is $96,775. That's down from the 102,490 or whatever it was that we had, we had last year, and the 121 that it was just two years ago. You can see that there's almost a $26,000 decrease in the average taxable value for a resident in Troy. I've also listed how many residential sales we had, condominium sales. Again, those are all just numbers you can look at. There's a nice little summary chart after that. The one thing I would like to do is just complement, first off, of the Board of Review. Very difficult year for them again. A lot of angry people out there. Doesn't matter how much you lower an assessment, it's never enough. When the market is going up, everyone's relatively happy to see their value increasing. When the market's going down, it makes it very difficult, and we did have a new member this year. They all did a great, great job there. I was very proud of them. Also, very proud of my staff. Two people short this year, handled the same volume, did get the job done. And the minutes follow, we, we are doing the minutes at a minimum of the state requirement now. We're trying to save time and money anywhere we can, so you'll notice that there's not a lot of verbiage for the minutes this year. It's, it's as cut and dried as we could possibly make it and still get it by the state of Michigan. And with that, I could answer any questions you might have.
Council, do you have questions for Mr. Lucari at this point?
Mayor?
Councilman Howarak?
Yes, how, how are we doing subsequent to this in property sales, value versus taxable value? Do you know where we are, say, year to date?
I, I do. We're at about 49%. As little as five years ago, the taxable value compared to the property value was at 40%. So we picked up almost 18%. Well, we haven't picked it up, we've lost it off the assessment side. We've lost almost 18% of the value off the assessment side. There's virtually no difference right now between assessed and taxable value.
I'm sorry, let me, let me just redirect. The property sales?
Yes.
This year?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Versus taxable value, are we seeing that stabilize somewhat?
Yes, actually, the residential class is doing better than we expected. After the six-month study, we're about 4% high, so that'd mean a 4% reduction. The problem that we have is the industrial class is falling through the floor. We're pushing 35, 40% vacancy out there. The buildings are selling for what they were selling for in 1981. The office buildings, office vacancy in Troy right now is about 30%. That's very, very high. And the rent is down to 1985 levels. Buildings that used to lease for $20 to $25 a square foot are leasing for $13 to $15 a square foot. So that's where you're going to see the big drop in your value. The residential value is actually doing better. It's a, it's a good sign for the residential value, but the commercial industrial property, there, there's no end in sight right now.
And that's part of the problem in the DDA, then, I imagine?
Exactly.
Are, are we seeing any, are we seeing commer, uh, office, office sales going anywhere? Are, are we still on the other side, south of $100 a square foot?
Yes, and we've, we've got buildings now that are regularly selling for $50 a square foot. And five years ago, those were $140 a square foot buildings.
Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Lucari at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate, and I appreciate the accuracy on your prediction of the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have the amendments to the Troy City Code, Chapter 96, Fire Protection, based upon the 2009 International Fire Code and the 2009 Michigan Building Code. Assistant Chief Roberts?
Good evening.
You want to fix the mic up higher? There, thank you.
Mayor and council, I'm a little unprepared now as I've been helping with, with the citizens. My notes are downstairs in my office. I can get them, or you can let me try and wing it.
Do you want us to take a break and come back and do it, or do you want him to just?
Mr. G.
Council, what's your pleasure?
You feel comfortable winging it?
Sure. And I apologize, again, I was, kept a little bit busier than I expected to be. What you have before you is a proposal to amend Chapter 93, the Fire Prevention Code.
Aye.
The Fire Prevention Code is the local fire prevention code that we have in the city. We update it every three years. It's based on the International Fire Code. Both the International Fire Code and the International Building Code, which are companion codes, are updated every three years as part of the code cycle. The current edition is the 2009 edition. The state of Michigan adopts the International Building Code as the statewide construction code. They just recently adopted the 2009 edition, March 9th. So what we attempt to do is to update the Fire Prevention Code so that we are in sync with the Michigan Building Code, which the city of Troy adopts through Chapter 79. So the proposal is, is to amend Chapter 93 with the 2009 edition of the International Fire Code with those amendments.
Good job.
Councilor, do you have questions for Assistant Chief Roberts at this point? Of course, we read the data that was in the report, and if we have further questions about it, we know how to contact you and find out.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. There are no carryover items this evening. Next, we'll go to public hearings, which by law, we must take at the beginning of the meeting. And the first public hearing is special use approval for Capital Grill Outdoor Seating, north side of Big Beaver, east side of Coolidge. On space Q123, Section 20, presently zoned B2 community business and controlled by consent judgment. And presenting for staff will be Brent Savinat for this item. And after staff presents, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wants to speak on this item, they'll be called on that time. Mr. Savinat, nice to see you.
You too, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm pretty good at reading a room, so I'm going to be really brief, if that's okay. The, the applicant intends to add an outdoor seating area to Capital Grill, which is located at Somerset North.
Right.
North side of Big Beaver, it's on the south side of the building. Here you see an, an area with zoning, it's Zone B2, also controlled by consent judgment. But in this instance, the consent judgment really has no bearing on this, on this application. There you see this, the proposed seating area, again, on the north side of, of Somerset North, where Capital Grill is located. What they propose is an approximately 813 square foot outdoor seating area with nine tables, 42 seats. And they propose to delineate the area with a non-permanent ornamental fence with planters on top. And there's a, there's a, there's a sketch of, a dimension sketch showing what they want to do. Here's a photograph of a similar Capital Grill located elsewhere in the state, but that's essentially what it's going to look like, look like at that occasion. The Planning Commission considered this item on March 22nd, and they recommended approval of this item, and city management recommends approval of the outdoor seating area for Capital Grill. I can now answer any questions you have.
Councilor, do you have questions at this point for Mr. Savinat? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here on this particular item on Capital Grill that wishes to speak? I note there's a representative from Capital Grill here. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Kirwin?
Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby grants special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Capital Grill outdoor seating area located on the north side of Big Beaver, east of Coolidge, 2800 West Big Beaver Road, Q123, Section 20, within the B2 zoning district.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Potem Kirwin, seconded by Councilman Howarak, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. We wish you success with your project. Thank you, Mr. Kirwin. Next, we're going to have a public hearing on the Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment. File number ZODA 236, the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Rewrite. And Mr. Miller, Mr. Savinat will present, and we also have Mr. Dick Carlisle here. And I note for the audience, both here and at home, that this is a major undertaking which encompassed more than 30 meetings and over two years. In addition to our master land use plan, which the Planning Commission, Planning Department, and Legal Department worked on, they also worked on the zoning ordinance, which is a significant accomplishment for this group, and we truly appreciate all the time and effort and expertise that went into that. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to give a brief introduction, and Mr. Savinat is then going to summarize the overall process, and then Zach Branigan from Carlisle Wardman will run a tutorial of the web-based proposed zoning ordinance. And I would note that Mr. Carlisle is here to answer any questions. A lot of times, people would say that this is like a Super Bowl for, for planters, but since Brent and I are hockey guys, we'll say it's the seventh game of the Stanley Cup. But 10 and a half years ago, I started working for the city as a professional community planner. The one thing that I noticed or recognized is that the zoning ordinance and the, at that time, what was called the Future Land Use Plan, were equivalent. They almost were exactly alike. And that, those documents served the city very well in controlling the growth and explosion of growth which the city experienced. But the one thing I did notice is that the, the master plan, which has been adopted in 2008, needed to recognize what was happening in the current world. And also, the zoning ordinance needed to be modernized and implement that new master plan. And so that's what's happening right now. Vision 2020 was, was critical, and that, that process identified that both the master plan and the zoning ordinance would be updated. Also, the Downtown Development Authority adopted and moved forward the Big Beaver Corridor Study, which was incorporated into the master plan. And also, we have Big Beaver Design Guidelines, which were used as part of this process as, as a basis for the form-based code of the Big Beaver District. Those are all being incorporated into this zoning ordinance, and I would just say that this is a great accomplishment. I would like to recognize the Planning Commission, City Council for moving forward with this. And also, I would like to identify that from, from a more of a management standpoint, that the Planning Department, along with Carlisle Wardman, forms a really unique synergistic relationship that allows for these planning products to be produced that are very, very well-done. And this, this document is incredible in the sense that it's readable, very usable. And then I'd just like to recognize Brent Savinat, who is the Acting Planning Director, for taking over this, and he champions the planning process in zoning. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Brent, and we'll try to move through this relatively quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Savinat?
Thank you, Mark. This has been a significant undertaking, as Mark indicated. There's been over 30 meetings, there's been a Planning Commission public hearing, there was a zoning ordinance workshop held in, in, in March. The City Council was involved in a, they attended a joint Planning Commission, City Council meeting where we went over, in detail, went over the, a summary of the zoning ordinance. And there was also, there was also a study meeting where we went over in significant detail the form-based code provisions of the, of the ordinance. So this is not going to be a detailed presentation, okay? This is going to be very, very kind of bare bones. There's been so much public, public input and so much transparency that I think that's, it would be overkill to really go into, into the detail this evening. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to just do a brief summary. The changes that were made to the ordinance were made for six reasons. They were, they were made to make the document easier to read, they were made to expedite review and approval for development applications, they were advanced by the master plan, or they were advanced by the Planning Commission, they were advanced by staff or our consultant, Carlisle Wardman Associates, or they were, they were made to comply with either the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, other laws, or, or case law. And I'm just going to very briefly hit on all six of these with, with some examples. So firstly, the changes made to make, made to make the zoning ordinance easier to read and use. Drumroll, please, there's a table of contents. Unbelievable. I mean, it's, it's so refreshing having that simple, that simple item in the ordinance. It makes a world of difference. Obviously, that's in this ordinance. The district regulations have been completely, completely reorganized. There's a use table where all the uses are listed in one spot. So if you want to put in, for example, a restaurant, you go to the use table, you can see all the districts on one page where you can do a restaurant. It's web-based, and when I'm done my very brief presentation, Zach Branigan is going to, is going to run through another very brief presentation of how this document can be utilized online. It's got updated and improved definitions, including new illustrations for definitions. And there's an example of, of an illustration that was, that was put in the ordinance. It's, that's kind of a typical, it's, it's, it's an illustration you see in many ordinances, but it's been kind of given a, given a, kind of a new lease on life and made kind of more fresh and more, more modern as per this zoning ordinance. So next, we've changes to expedite review and approval. There are more administrative review and approvals of site plans with this zoning ordinance. There are fewer special use applications, so fewer public hearings, applications can get online quicker. The PUD, PUD review and approval process is, is going to be, is proposed to be quicker with fewer public hearings, and the site condominium review process is, is proposed to be quicker. In terms of changes due to the, to the master plan, we've modified the zoning districts, including adding a PV planned vehicle sales district for the motor mall. adding a PV planned vehicle sales district for the motor mall. We've developed sustainable design project provisions and other sustainable provisions like stormwater management and wind energy conversion systems. And we've updated the environmental performance standards such as parking and landscaping. In terms of changes advanced by the Planning Commission, it's actually going to be more difficult for commercial vehicles to be parked in residential districts. We've created form-based code districts, one for Big Beaver, one for Maple Road, and one for the 21 neighborhood nodes that are located at major thoroughfares throughout the community. And we've strengthened the provisions for lighting, parking, and landscaping. And changes advanced by staff or Carlisle Wardman, we've actually clarified the role of the zoning administrator. It was very kind of confusing under the existing zoning ordinance. We've developed consistent public hearing notice requirements. There are one area, they refer to all public hearing notice requirements, be it a rezoning, a special use application, et cetera. And the procedure for rezonings was expanded upon and made clear. Right now, there's about two sentences that explain rezonings. It's very difficult to understand. The special use, general special use standards have been expanded, and the parking space standards have been updated, in some instances, reduced, thereby potentially reducing the amount of hard surfacing in the city. Changes made to comply with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. This is going to be, this is a little confusing for me. The BZA is going to become the ZBA. It's kind of a tongue twister for me to get that straight. We've added alternate members to the BZA. We've clarified the duties of the BZA to include not only variances, but also appeals of administrative decisions and interpretations. We've provided the BZA the authority to review and approve use variances, and we've updated Site Condominium provisions. We tend to focus a lot on the text. There's also a map. Obviously, the zoning ordinance is comprised of a text and a map. We've updated the map. We did that internally with our GIS people here at the city, in partnership with Carlisle Wardman. So to summarize, this zoning ordinance is going to implement the master plan. It's going to be significantly easier to use. It's going to protect single-family residential neighborhoods. That was an important component of the master plan. We've hardly changed, made any changes whatsoever to single-family residential. We have widened the range of uses permitted in most, in all districts, basically, except residential districts. What this has done is it's increased the reuse potential, it's increased the marketability, it's increased the value of property, non-residential property, in the city. We've created three form-based code districts, and what we've done is, very importantly, is made it, increased sped up approval times for many types of applications. And with that said, I would like to introduce Zach Branigan from Carlisle Wardman Associates. He's going to run you through the web-based application of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. I like the change to ZBA, because I've been calling it that for years, and I get corrected. So I guess I'm just ahead of the curve here. Pretty nice.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, Mark, for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Schilling. I'm going to get out of this and... I am here to walk you through the digital version of the ordinance, ordinance that we've designed from the ground up to be functional in a whole new environment. You're all very used to carrying around a 300, 400-page paper document with hundreds of pages of amendments. Now, we're going to have the ability to do something completely new, much more accessible to the public, much easier to update, very much better for the paperless Planning Commission, for instance. And we've already found, I'm using it already on my mobile phone, for instance, I'm able to, in a meeting, pull up provisions on my mobile phone. So I'm going to show you some neat things about the ordinance that we've built in from the ground up. Doing a comprehensive rewrite really gave us the opportunity to do some innovative things with the ordinance, and I thank the Planning Department and the Planning Commission in particular for their ability to really get into innovating and coming up with new ideas. So the concept that we've built the zoning ordinance around from the ground up is called "codability." This is sort of a term we've thrown at the process. And the reason we do that is because the suffix "ability" applies to a lot of different themes that we've applied in the ordinance. First of all, the ordinance is designed for maximum usability. They're designed from the ground up specifically for online navigation. So even back in the old paper versions, we were thinking all along, how is this going to work when you're pulling this thing up online? And just so you know, it's not a traditional, like, HTML-based website. It's basically a very large portable document file, a PDF, that's built with a comprehensive set of hyperlinks. And this is all designed using off-the-shelf software that the city of Troy Planning Department has and has been trained to use. So when edits are made in the future to this document, they have the ability to do it. You don't always have to sign a private contract for somebody like me to come in and do the work. In terms of accessibility, the ordinance, the graphics, Brent already gave you a little preview of the graphics, the way the ordinance is laid out, and I'm going to show you how some of the groups of different articles were put together. It's made for ease of accessibility. And also, it was written in very plain English. We went through a process of trying to get rid of as much of the planer ease as possible so that anybody that would be reading it for the first time would get it. Manageability, I described that already. Portability, you can take this on a portable device. We're starting to use it in laptops and cellphones, iPads, things of that nature. The real meat of the ordinance, though, is the function. Sustainability, this ordinance, based all the way back on Vision 2020, the master plan, the corridor study, and all these things, the concept of sustainability, this ordinance really is, I believe, an industry leader in the areas of sustainability. Viability, Brent mentioned that we add economic value to Troy without compromising residential areas. I'll show you a little bit of that. Walkability, compact development. Stability, fair and predictable development regulations. The way this ordinance is laid out digitally, it really makes the development regulations and the processes very simple, fair, easy to understand, and predictable, and very accessible for the user. And then marketability, using this ordinance, you're going to be able to see right up front what regulations are applicable to your property, what it could look like. It's going to give people a very quick and easy understanding of what's possible. So allow me just a few minutes to show you how this ordinance functions. This page right here is a how-to-use-and-navigate the online Troy zoning ordinance. This document is available online, and it's with the cities, on the city Planning Department website. There's a couple of different things built onto every page. You can see the margins here in the upper, the footer, the header, and the margin. Every page has an article number and name on it, simple. These back-and-forward buttons, in the print version, these won't show up, but online, they're there. So like, if you are skipping link to link to link, and then you're saying, boy, three pages ago, I have somewhere, you can click back. And then, once you're done, you can click forward and go back to where you were. Those are simple back-and-forth navigation buttons. Any language you see in blue type is a hyperlink. In the version that you have, there are something like 3,500 hyperlinks in that one there. And typically, what we did is if a word appeared seven or eight times in one paragraph, the first time it appears it's a hyperlink, rather than each and every time. Although, over time, as we develop it, we'll probably end up having every appearance of every word will be a hyperlink. The margin boxes here are links to five different sections of the ordinance. I'm going to show you those in a second. I'm going to get back to those. And then these footer boxes are on every page. They take you to the big, important things in the ordinance, the table of contents, the zoning map, the definition section, the figures and maps, and the tables. This is convenient because you can go, and I'm going to now bounce through some things here. You can click on figures and maps on any page. It takes you to this hub right here. I call these hubs. We have the table of contents hub, and then we have the figures hub, and the maps hub, and all these things. So these are all the figures that are in the ordinance, all the illustrations. You can click on any one of these, and it will take you right to the regulation. If I want to navigate back to that, I can go right to here, and I can go again and go to any one of these. Tables, we also have this entire list of tables. There's lots and lots of tables in this ordinance, as Brent said. A lot less text, a lot more graphics and tables. So if you want to see any of these, you can go, here's the landscape screening schedule. It shows you when you have different land use relationships. These are the permissible types of landscape screening. Simple enough. Table of contents. We're back at the main table of contents here, and this lists every single section of the ordinance. But if this is a little bit confusing, and you're not quite sure what you're looking for, basically, what we did was we took these and lumped the articles into a series of sort of packaged groups. And this was actually on the suggestion of a planning commissioner who recommended that, look, if I'm a developer, all I really care about is the development regulations. So we have here, you can click on development regulations. It takes me to the digital table of contents hub, and I've got the four articles that are directly related specifically to development regulations. So then I click on that, and it takes me to the comprehensive list of sections. If I'm looking for live-work units, I click there, and it ultimately will take me to live-work unit regulations. If I want to look at nonconformity, I can click on this section, take me to the nonconforming sections, et cetera. Authority administration, so on and so forth. So that's basically how the ordinance works. I can show you any number of things if you have any specific questions about it. But you can see that there are literally hundreds and hundreds of links that are in this ordinance. You can see in here how some of the graphics show up. They're directly in line with the text. These are all linked to in the table of contents. You can find things very quickly and easily, and I hope that it will be a huge asset to the city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Mr. Carlisle, going to...
No, I'm here to answer questions, but I wanted to all note that I have clinging to my hard copy also.
We have our...
We have ours.
We have our hard copy, too, in this huge notebook. But after working on it for so long, it is really, as I said at the beginning, truly an accomplishment for everyone that was involved, and the number of hours and the expertise that went into that. The Planning Commission members are very proud of it and should be, as you should be. So Counsel, do you have any questions for the group here on the zoning ordinance? Counsel, I'm going to make...
First, I want to thank you all. I'm really very pleased with the document and the facility of use. I'm glad that we'll no longer see 40-foot light poles in parking lots. Things like that have been bothering me for years. And the whole thing is just greener and more nimble, and I thank you for that. And the answers to my questions I put forward earlier. From a practical matter, the wind turbine that we have out in front, how would that be placed, and what would the setbacks be in a commercial property? And where does one measure? As I was reading the ordinance, I was like, I'm not a developer, but I don't know how you would measure that, you know, from which way.
Wind energy conversion systems are regulated in the ordinance in a new section that we have that's devoted entirely to environmental provisions and sustainability and renewable energy and that. So they has its own comprehensive section, Section 12.04.
249 Drew whatever.
Yep, right at the top of 249, yep. It depends on a couple of things. One is the scale of the units. The units that we have here at the city are what's called onsite systems. They're designed exclusively for use by the building that they're attached to. They just supplement our grid feed. There are commercial systems which have much more stringent regulations. The regulations for onsite, if I recall off the top of my head here, the setback distances between, it depends on the district that you're in, but the nearest property line shall be at least two times the height of the tower. So if you have a 35-foot tower, then it's going to be 70 feet off the property line.
And is that... Okay. I noticed in some of them, it said, measure from this blade, measure from that blade. And I was thinking, okay, I can figure out how to do that on a windmill turbine kind, but...
Yep. The, let's skip to the definition of a wind energy turbine. There are two types, basically, that we regulated in here, which is a horizontal access and a vertical access turbine. The ones we have outside are horizontal, I'm sorry, are vertical access turbine, like a helix. Most of the ones you see are actually a horizontal access turbine, like a traditional windmill. The height, the way that we do the height of them is to the top of the moving component, so...
So...
Rather than the hub.
That one, you know, you've got the pole, and then you've got this part, so it's to the top of the...
Correct.
That's all I need to tell. I have a couple of other questions, though, and maybe it's from living in the Southwest for so long. I saw nothing in this ordinance that regulated or spoke to diminishment of light. It talked about, you know, that you had to provide light for your site, but it didn't say what you could do to your neighbor and how a diminishment of light on your neighbor's property would be regulated. Is there any thought for that?
Maybe I'm not understanding...
Okay. I live, I don't, but if I lived next to a commercial district where a three-story building was going to go in next door, and I would have no light on my backyard anymore?
Yep. I understand.
Do we care about that? No sunlight.
We do.
But it's not in here, is it?
But there's, no, there's no specific regulation in there. And it wasn't a matter that did come up during the course of the consideration of everything. It is, it is a matter that could be subject to site plan review in terms of compatibility.
And I guess I'd like to, I'd like to have the Planning Commission have a discussion about that.
Okay.
I was pretty pleased. I, as, it's not going to come as a surprise to any of you. I still want to know about the benefit of having roads, drives, and the like in flood hazard areas without any provision for a requirement of pervious pavers.
Well, you know, we did discuss this some time ago with Counsel regarding the whole issue of sustainable design measures, and we've had some further discussions with the engineering department. And we felt that we needed to walk before we could run in that particular issue, and that is to incentivize sustainable design. And there, I think, you know, as Zach referred to earlier, there is a strong component in here that we actually want to build on, where we can actually use sustainable design as an incentive. So, for example, while not necessarily explicitly stated, where, under the sustainable design measures, we will allow for credit towards certain aspects of complying with ordinance requirements if certain measures, such as pervious pavers, or rain gardens, or bio swales, or things of that nature, are incorporated in the design. We felt that this is a continuing technology, this whole field of sustainable design. And so we didn't want to hamper ourselves right off at the outset by codifying that language.
Okay. So what I, what I take from this is you will look at that from a best management practice standpoint in all cases, and as those practices change and improve and are validated, then those will become the lens through which you approve these sorts of...
Absolutely. And we, again, because this is a, this is a technology that is continuing to change, we want to be able to not constrain the creativity of the designers to develop sustainable design measures. And so that's, that was the approach that we took at the outset. And it's also more of a, the ordinance is written in a performance-based approach. In other words, here's the end result that we want to achieve. There are a multiple number of paths that you can get there.
I'm pleased overall, very pleased. Thank you.
Other questions? I'm very appreciative of the fact that the protection of the residential areas was so strongly felt in the development of the new zoning ordinance, because for all of us that have lived in Troy a long time, and those that are new to Troy, that's always been very special to us. And I think that development and change of use in certain areas, you know, we expect to happen, but I think that people are very protective of their own areas. I also feel that protection of having the EP, Environmental Protection, areas, I look for that in there. And also, I appreciate the changes in the ordinance with regard to commercial vehicles, because that's a thing that can be difficult, but also impacts the neighborhoods. The updated landscape provisions, because those are all things that will help, you know, the environment, but also help with the aesthetics, and also help with, you know, value of the homes. So I...